Thank you, everybody. For your
Next to their God, which stands one nation under God. And if it's law, we're going to be in justice.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Sergeant?
Any questions? Is this change easy? In favor?
Aye.
I'm on the opposed. So.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the April ninth meeting.
Second. Any questions or changes or modifications, updates on that? All in favor?
Aye.
By the opposed. So. Brian French, Odyssey, and Joe. Buddy?
Hi.
You gotta come up with these. Keep it coming.
Reinforcement.
Too many, yeah, reinforcement. Hi, I'm Brian French. For those who don't know me, I'm one of the co-coordinators for the Odyssey Mind Program this year. The other co-coordinator, Jill Motti, is unable to come today because she's with her kids' birthday presentation. So I'm holding out for it tonight. For those who don't know what Odyssey is, it's a creative problem-solving competition worldwide. And the teams have to come up with creative solutions to one of five different problems. And they have to honor their own without any help from their coaches or parents or anybody else on there. There is five different divisions, four that would fall under our purview. There's a primary division, which would be K through second grade. Elementary division for, so it's a third through fifth, middle school, six to eight, and then high school, ninth to 12th. This year, we had four teams. We had one of the Division One, the elementary division. But that also included at least one student that should have been on a primary team, but we didn't have enough kids to participate in that. So he actually had to suffer through with the older kids. And that, he did a good job on that. We had one Division Two team, which would have been the middle school. And then two Division Three teams, which is the high school. We had two seniors, one Morgan Curry. And then Daphne was the other one. So our season runs from like October to March initially. So there's three different competitions we can participate in. One is regionals, that's in March. So from October to March, they spend anywhere from four to 12, 16, 18, 20 hours a week working on their problems. The coach read the competition, work time they spend on there. And that's amongst all their other activities they're doing, because most of this, as you can see, we have four, there's six members of the one team here tonight. That's because the other ones have like sports or drama club or any other number of activities. They're all in probably two or more activities at any one time throughout the school year, as well as doing their academic programs as well. So they're very involved students, so they're trying to squeeze all that within there. So at regionals, that is just basically our BOSI's district. We competed, the Division One team got second. The Division Two team won regionals. And then went on to states. And then our two Division Three teams, the one got second, but then got what they call a lottery slot to go to states. And then these guys got first in regionals, and so went on to states for that. Then states is about three, two, three weeks after regionals. That was in April. And the Division Two team got third there. And the other Division Three team got fifth. And then these guys are state champions. And so. But as a result of that, and the reason why we're here tonight is by winning states, we qualify to go to Worlds. In the past, Genesee has had a handful of world champions. That's with out of 60 to 80 teams, they're a little more usually from teams around the world, China, Korea, Mexico, and so on. Portugal, Poland, Polska. And that. And then we've had another handful that have been like second or third place. A lot of this team last year got second place, actually missed first place by one point. And then we've had another handful, or a lot of our other teams that have gone over the years, have placed in the top 15, 10, or six. So we've had a very successful program at Worlds. And this year, Worlds is at Iowa State University in Ames, Iowa. It alternates between there and Michigan State in Michigan. So this year, it's a long drive out to Iowa. And it's May 21st to 24th. And that's what we're here to do, is ask for permission to go and attend and represent Genesee at the World Finals and hopefully bring home some more hardware.
Can you tell us a little bit about the challenge you had, the problem you had to solve?
Alright, so we did the vehicle problem. Perhaps, so we had to construct a vehicle to complete a certain set of tasks. We had to receive an object, ring a bell, and create two different methods of propulsion to make it go forwards and backwards. And while moving, we weren't allowed to interact with the vehicle at all. So it had to complete all of its tasks by itself. Which. Yeah.
That's awesome.
And this is all within like a drive-in movie that was supposed to be a drive-in movie setting. So they actually had like a skit going on. It was supposed to be a drive-in movie, and their theme was, what you guys?
The story of a spook, a spook, yeah, a spoon trying to find its purpose in life.
Did it turn into?
It discovered that to fulfill its purpose in life, it needed to be a spork.
The spork was the main theme.
Yeah.
Would you all just share what your favorite thing that you created this year was?
My favorite thing I created was, it was a series of Jacob's Ladders out of cardboard that would all, it was a black and white picture, a painting, and it would all flip simultaneously to the colored version of that painting.
My favorite and also least favorite thing I've made this year was it was probably around 2,000 to 3,000 pop tabs. And we tried to get them to change color and like flip over, so that way it could show one design and color, and then one in black and white. I spent way more time than I'd like to admit on it, and I've had words with it.
Did it listen?
No.
I think my favorite creation this year was less a singular like creation and more like getting to help with things like the pop tab drawer, which, you know, that took a lot of hours. But also things like, we had like a fridge, which was supposed to hold like the piece of, like one of the objects that we had to carry on the vehicle. And like a small cannon that was, that had springs in it, that took too long for what it dared to make. It worked.
In the vehicle, so.
It was like a centipede had a bunch of legs and it walked. So.
The product development team at Tesla could use you.
But a lot of, a lot of the focus is on thinking outside the box. It's supposed to be like the theme of the drive-in movie, but you get more points if you do something that's not what you would consider a drive-in movie. That's like where they, why they came up with the creation of the spork. Kind of like a Toy Story kind of theme. Whereas other teams did something that was, you know, like one team did like Grease and also a typical movie. And so you get more points for thinking outside of the box and doing something that's not expected. And I think that helps them, you know, going forward in careers and education and stuff too as well.
So Brian, as we get to what your request is, are you planning to go out on the 20th or what's the?
Probably, most of us will probably leave on the 20th, because it's like a 16, 18-hour drive. And we have to be out there on Tuesday afternoon to check into the, into the rooms and get there in time for the dinner and for the opening ceremonies. And we'll probably come back on the Saturday, because the closing ceremonies are late Friday night. And so to leave Friday night to come back is tough. So we're actually probably gone Monday to Saturday. Yep.
So first off, thank you.
Yeah.
I guess I would entertain a motion to approve the Odyssey team to go to the Worlds for May 21st to 24th and whatever their travel schedule is before and their after.
Okay, alright. I'd like to introduce this resolution on the recommendation of superintendent of schools. The Board of Ed wishes to approve the Odyssey of the Mind trip to the Worlds competition at Iowa State University, May 21 to 24. Sergeant?
I'm just gonna jump right, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm not even gonna ask.
Hi, folks. I'm Dave Kozowski. For those that don't know me, I teach high school physics at the secondary school here. Appreciate you letting me come in. I'm here for two reasons. One, to pitch to all of you for approval to bring my recent students out on another adventure. For the end of the year, to do an overnight stay at the facility. The other is to speak on behalf a little bit for one of our current students, Noah Rose, who was just accepted to a summer internship at U of R. He can't make it tonight because of a family event and we have a few notes to leave. So the Pingle Lakes Community College owns and operates a campus that's hundreds of acres on the south end of Honeyway Lake. And I was fortunate enough to work with other teachers at HFL years ago, where they would do overnight stays there. And kind of took that idea and ran with it. And since for nine years, minus I think one because of the COVID, bring down 25-ish young adults with a chaperone, and we do all sorts of canoeing, hiking, bonfires. Lots of review for the regions, of course. They cook and prep their own food. It's just a nice way to end the school year. And there's no cost to the district other than just get the busing and then we get chaperone paid to be on the books. But if you do it by the hourly rate, it's really, we're donating our time. But it's a, it's a good way to close the school year. And then more recently, Noah Rose just got accepted to the University of Rochester Summer Program, which is a very esteemed program. It's a paid six-week internships where he actually gets to do research under the auspices of professors, engineers, and staff. And let's see, some of the notes that he left was the interview process, he had to write a letter of interest. He had to write an essay about his interests, experience, and future goals in science. And he also had to submit transcript, most recent report card, letter of recommendation. And I believe that they had dozens and dozens of people that submitted all of that work. And then they interviewed 40 individuals and they accepted only 16. So it's a real big deal for Genesee to be on the map to have U of R bring somebody to get paid to do authentic research. And then at the end of the six-week, there's a symposium in which they, along with the other students that were selected, give a professional presentation on what they've discovered. And the interview process, they asked him, it was about 40 minutes long. They asked him all sorts of things about what classes he's taken, of his general experience with science, outside experience in science, and if he kept to date with recent advancements. And that's about what he left for me, but I'm excited because he's the second student that we've had at Genesee that has participated, and it's a very big deal.
And before we vote on the physics retreat, I just want to celebrate and recognize Mr. Kozowski. He was the 2024 Senior Family Prize for Excellence in Secondary School Teaching. He was awarded, nominated for this position because of what you see here tonight, nominating students to go on and do the work that Noah's gonna do this summer. Giving up his personal time to do a physics retreat. And those are just two tiny, small examples of the many things that Mr. Kozowski does for our school and our students. And you know you've made a difference when we put a Facebook post out celebrating your acknowledgement. And if you had a chance to read the comments, they were heartwarming. Families sent very personal messages. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you for everything you do for our students.
Well, thanks.
Dave, in addition to being incredibly humble, you are an incredible teacher. So thank you for what you do.
Yeah, well, the reality is I don't get them under you, you know. Your parents and other teachers and staff that know.
And they go to the next level with you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Yeah.
So with that said.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I'd like to introduce this resolution on the recommendation of superintendent of schools. The Board wishes to approve the 2024 Regents Physics Retreat at the remote field station at Honeyway Lake, June 21 through 22. Sergeant?
After a scene. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm gonna jump right to it, so not even gonna ask for anybody opposed. One abstention, but thank you. So. Thank you.
I actually have some amazing fifth-grade students here to present our Go Blue traits, our PDS traits this year are, or this month, if you may. What else?
Bravery. And courage and leadership, right? And so this is what you're demonstrating here. So remember, Liv, you wanted to be the clicker, right? Okay. You can go ahead and introduce yourselves first.
I'm Emma.
I'm Liv.
I'm Abby.
We're here on behalf of the fifth grade to talk about the whale watch.
Our whale watch is approximately gonna cost $28,000. We will be riding on two coach buses from and back. We will take a ride on a duck boat, visit a museum, not a museum, aquarium, walk on a freedom trail, visit Quincy Market, and of course, the biggest thing, the whale watch. Matt, we will all have matching t-shirts. We will have snacks and meals and a hotel.
Fundraisers for 20, for the 2024 whale watch. Fall fundraiser, it, the cookie dough, the cookie cart, Applebee's Pancake Breakfast, Niagara Chocolates, and then the Hardwood Classics basketball game.
Let's talk a little bit more about our fundraisers. We did the cookie dough sale, which we sold many tubs of cookie dough.
The coffee cart is Miss Career's class in the fifth grade. Put together a coffee cart, which adults can buy coffee and kids can buy hot cocoa and snacks. We raised over $300.
We did a pancake breakfast at Applebee's. We, as students, served customers and parents helped run the breakfast.
The Niagara Chocolates was an online sale, and we sold many boxes of chocolate.
The Hardwood Classic was a basketball game from the Vansio staff versus the community. We had snacks and candies. And we raised, this was our biggest fundraiser, we raised approximately $3,000.
I hope you don't have to walk.
Thank you to our brave fifth graders. And thank you to GCVF well for supporting everything that we have done to make the whale watch possible. I know that the children are very excited. The staff is very excited to carry on this tradition. So thank you for the community, because it's taken a village truly to make this possible.
Their fundraising goal, are they set?
Yes. So actually, we had, at the very end, last week, we had, we were looking for specific sponsorships. And the staff came together and came up with an idea. It's wear what you want for Whale Watch Wednesday, so WWW. And so all the staff donated immediately, within one day, we were able to sponsor all the students. Left because the staff was just incredibly generous. So yes, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And fifth graders, nice job. And I'm breaking my rule. I always put someone between myself and the students, because you're such a good presenter, that I never want to follow students. I had to follow you tonight, so. And you're more than welcome to stay for a budget present. Sound exciting? So thank you all for coming to the budget presentation tonight. We will be adopting our 2024-25 budget. You know, when we look at, oh, Mr. Holt, we're not. Tonight, as I said, we are adopting our budget. We will have a public presentation of the budget on May 14th. And on May 21st, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, we will be having our budget vote in our traditional area, just outside the McCarthy foyer. You've heard Mr. Carroll talk on what we really base our budget decisions on. And it's our strategic plan, preparing a high-quality student preparation for college, career, or military. Having our social, emotional supports for all of our staff, students, and community. Consistent, high-quality, and informative communication with all stakeholders. And really, this last goal really talks about our budget, providing systems of financial support to meet the needs of a high-quality school district. So we also looked at our guidelines and principles, and our decisions are made for students. Obviously, we want to bring maximum value to the local taxpayers. We have to maximize state aid, and I will talk about the changes that were received this weekend. We need to look for ways to deliver services in a more cost-effective manner. We can't continue to do the things that we've always done in the same manner. And we've talked about being in a deficit spending cycle. We really need to preserve the fiscal integrity of the school and not just look at this budget, but many budgets for years on out. This year, I really want to commend the administrative team. We were very collaborative. We looked at every single line of the budget. We really went through that line by line to try and save and scrimp as much as possible. But we also had to make decisions that support the reserve plan that was adopted in December of 2022. So where are we? So you know, we had federal stimulus funds in the amount of 2.6 million. They need to be spent by September. So we had to trim and reach our number of 25,710,060. So if you've been at our prior board meetings, you heard Mr. Carroll talk repeatedly about our budget number being 25,447,338. He said it multiple times. He had it memorized. With the additional foundation aid that we received, as well as expense-driven aids, we were able to increase our revenues and our overall budget. But one of the things that we must do is we have to be responsible with our budgeting. So you'll see later on that we are using reserves to balance this budget, and we're also using unappropriated fund balance. We have to have a plan to replace those funds. We can't continue to be in a deficit spending model. And of course, you've heard a little bit about our facilities. We need to continue to maintain and improve our facilities. So when you look at our revenue budget, the property taxes, they are remaining the same, just over 12 million. Pilot payments did not change, but what you can see is the state foundation aid. We received $69,000 more over the weekend when the budget was finalized. The state expense-based aids, these are our BOSI's aids, these are transportation aids, these are aids that as the more you spend, the more you'll get back in aid. We received an additional 110,000 in that area. And then the other lines did not change, textbook, software aid, special ed, high cost, Medicaid reimbursement, other revenue. The one piece that I do want to point out, we are continuing to take $300,000 from our reserves. We are using 354,000 from appropriated fund balance. And again, those are the amounts that I'm talking about, that we need to really plan to underspend this budget to replace next year, so that we're not in a deficit spending cycle. Thank you, Mr. Holt. So again, you can see the year-to-year changes. What this budget does include is a 3.8 increase in our tax levy cap. Pilots haven't changed. Again, that state foundation aid, you remember that number was 210, it's now 279,000. And again, really, besides that, and the state expense-based aids, not a lot of changes. And you can see, we are utilizing less money of unappropriated fund balance and reserves. Again, we need to be out of that deficit spending cycle. So I talked about a $1.3 million gap when we first started this process. What were some of the things that we reduced from this budget? Certainly, BOSI services, we reduced contractual expenses. We were spending a lot of money on our elevator repairs, as well as artillery repairs. They have both been rebuilt in the capital improvement project. Software is something, as an admin team, we reviewed what we're currently utilizing, what we're not utilizing. And we trimmed what we didn't need from those software packages out of the budget. We have two retirements. We have a math retirement and a world language position. We are not replacing those positions. We do have an aid. So the aid, the person is not being cut, the position is being cut. We have special education needs within our building, so that person will be reassigned. So again, you know, it's a savings for the school district, but really trying to preserve people in our, in our in our school district. A copy person, we have someone that comes in evenings and makes copies for teachers. A school monitor. And again, the new staff hires that we're not doing, those we had looked at adding. Two special education teachers to our budget, we're adding one. We had considered adding an ESL teacher to our current staff of three ESL teachers. That is not something that we're moving forward with. And then we had looked at potentially putting an additional elementary teacher in there in case we had a significant increase in students entering Genesee. But one of the things that Ms. New, Mr. Lehman, and myself did earlier this year was really looked at our class sizes. And we determined ranges of numbers that we would then determine, is this a class that, a section that we can do in four sections? Can we do five sections or three different classrooms? So we have those parameters established, and we feel that with our current staffing, we'll be able to meet those needs. The other piece that we utilized for a budget reduction was debt service. So our debt service is our payments and interest on our capital projects. So what we did is you can do long-term financing, or you can do short-term financing. We originally had planned to do more of a long-term financing, with the interest rates being as high. We're doing a short-term a ban, so we're gonna finance our principal and interest for a year in a ban that has a lower interest rate and that saves significant money for our district. The other piece that we're doing, we received federal funds and a Title I grant. And in that grant, we had allocated money for curriculum development, professional development, some mentors. And what we've done is we have allocated that towards staff member salaries to keep our district performing at the highest level with the people here performing and doing those jobs. So what does this budget include? You just heard what it doesn't. We still have rigorous academic offerings. We have a full-time K through five STEAM teacher. We have two full-time technology teachers. We have multiple AP courses, a variety of extracurricular clubs, two full-time reading interventions specialist at K5, which is an addition that we added through the ARP funds and really felt that we needed to keep those people in those, in those positions. Two full-time math intervention specialists, a wide range of athletic opportunities, and a strings program. And I really wanted to highlight what we have in this budget, because it goes back to our principles. How do we preserve people and continue to offer amazing programming for our students? The tax levy, as taxpayers, you all want to know, how is this going to impact you? So when you look at your tax levy increase from year to year, it is based on prior year. And that's why there's a compounding impact. So last year, we had the ability to go out at 4.59%. We went out at 1.9%. And so at that time, people would say you actually left money on the table, this, this money up here. But one of the things I really want to commend the board is they have been very thoughtful in how they have set the tax caps. And last year, we received an additional $1 million in foundation aid. So our board made a collective decision to not go out to the tax cap, but to be reasonable and say, let's go at 1.9. And really, you know, the feeling is, let's keep the money in the taxpayer's own bank account instead of us taking it and putting it in the reserves. Well, and you'll see in an upcoming slide, CPI is forcing us, or inflation is really challenging us to do things differently. So this year, we need to go out at that tax cap max, which is 3.83%. As an additional $461,000 that taxpayers will be providing to the tax levy. And the tax cap, first of all, it's never just 2%. You know, we know that people think that the 2% cap, tax cap means that it's all it can be. But really, what you really want to look at is 2% of that is your instruction and operations. That is your people. That's our that's our teachers. That's our that is the meat and bones of of our school district. And then you can see the 1.8% is capital project, bus purchases, BOSI's capital projects. And it's important to know that we need to continue to purchase buses. It's important for us to continue to pursue capital projects. It helps us with our our tax levy, but it also provides improvements needed to our district. If you've been in the gym and saw some of the the issues we've had in the last year, you know that we need to continue to do capital improvement projects. And this was the slide I was I was talking about. You can see the drastic increases that we have experienced in inflation. And that's why we now need to make sure that when we propose our our school budgets, that we are going on the tax cap levy. So, as a taxpayer, what does this mean for you? If you have $150,000 house, um, an annual increase of $61.25. So, really, if your house is $150,000, you're looking at a $5 a month increase. If you have a $300,000 house, you're looking at $10 a month. In my opinion, as a taxpayer, I think it's well worth it. So, here's our 24-25 proposed budget, looking at our general support, our instruction, our transportation, employee benefits. And really, what we like to show on this slide is that 75% of our budget is salaries for the people that work here. I'd also like to point out the inter-fund transfers, 99. Last year, that amount was 300,000, and that was 300,000 for a couple of reasons. We do an annual, what's called the capital outlay project. So, we do upgrades to our facility, and then we get the state aid, building aid the following year. Last year, we had increased that to an additional $150,000 for a local capital project. So, that was 250. And then we did a inter-transfer fund for school lunch program. So, last year, that amount was 300. But really, the reason we made that decision to not do the local capital project is because we have to front that $150,000 at first, and then we would get the aid on that local capital project over 15 years. And when we are faced with a 1.3 million dollar gap, it did not make sense to utilize that money in that manner and have the aid stretched out for so many years. So, you can see the year-to-year changes, right around 6.1, 6.6% for a general support, 12.1% in instruction, transportation, again, employee benefits, debt service, and that inter-fund transfer. And that's where you could see the last year, the amount that we had that I just spoke about. So, this is where I talked about that deficit spending trend, and you can see in 2023, we had just over $4 million in reserves. We're utilizing reserves this year, and we plan to keep our reserves right around the 3.6 and not drop below that 3.5. Our reserve plan indicates that we would like our reserves to be around 5 million. And so, eventually, we would like to build those back up to have at that $5 million amount for years just like this, where we need to dip into our reserves when we have challenging fiscal times. We have to purchase new buses. We are on a 10-year bus replacement cycle. And when you look at the cost of a bus, it's it's crazy to think about. A school bus costing $175,000. But we do get 10 years out of that bus. And then we also get aid on our buses. So, when you look at that, before aid, the annual cost of those buses, 17,500. After aid, 6,212. We also need a handicap-accessible bus, and they are very expensive. You can see 201,000. Same type of thing. We get that transportation aid on those buses. And so, after aid, it's 7,135. If we don't stay on a 10-year replacement cycle, the cost to repair the buses soon outweighs the benefit of not purchasing and getting the aid benefits and transportation. And so, what you can see is if you stay consistent on a purchase cycle, eventually, that cost is built into your tax levy, and you don't see an annual increase in keeping up and purchasing school buses at that $500,000 level because of the aid that is generated. Now, we always have to talk about the contingent budget. No one wants to talk about this. If our budget were to fail on May 21st, we would be forced to reduce our budget by $461,000. I have possible reductions up here. Some of these are non-mandated programs. No one wants to see any of these programs go. These cuts would be devastating to student programming. Our elementary would not look the same. There would not be elementary art. There wouldn't be elementary library. There wouldn't be elementary music. Those are non-mandated classes. In the high school, AP courses, that's one of the things that Geneseo is known for, is our rigorous AP courses. High school art, business, technology, the extracurricular clubs that I talked about, athletics. Those are non-mandated costs or non-mandated programs. And if we had to move towards a contingent budget, that is the area that we would be looking to cut. To get to that amount of money, you could look at possibly two, one to two administrative positions, as well as seven teaching positions. Again, drastic draconian cuts for our district. So, on May 21st, there'll be two propositions on the ballot. One is for annual budget in the increase of 25,716. And then our transportation proposition is for four vehicles. So, it's for the large bus, the wheelchair bus, which reverse, and I think, is it a suburban? What was the other one? Yes, suburban, thank you. In the amount of 495,000. We hope to see you there. Any questions?
We just saw this this afternoon. So, I, how much state aid do we get over the weekend?
So, 69,000 in foundation aid and $117,000 in expense-driven needs.
About 100,000. So, we got 190,000 more in state aid, but 285,000 more in the budget.
We're also utilizing $54,000 more of fund balance. And what we needed to do is that when we were looking at the recommendation of of putting those positions back in the board that we had talked about from some of those initial cuts, that took us to that amount.
Anybody else have more questions? I think I have some personnel-related questions that we'll deal with separately, but. Thanks. So, David, you're all done? Ben Hathaway?
Yes. All right. First of all, I just want to thank the board for allowing me to speak tonight. So, it's been maybe a few weeks since I've been in this room, just through some committee work. So, Ben Hathaway, I'm a 1999 graduate of Geneseo Central School. Also a volunteer of the Geneseo Hall of Fame Committee. We have a ceremony this coming Saturday to induct some new members. So, exciting stuff there. Also, the the GCEF fund as well. So, benefiting students, allowing them to go on trips, right, and helping those out. You know, those students out in in need as well. So, I'm here speaking, you know, just looking at the potential cuts, right? I'm big into investing, right? So, I went to school. I got my MBA in finance. You know, you got to put money in, right, to get an output, right? You got to put work in to get an output. As a previous athlete here at Geneseo, I was part of the the 1999 boys' basketball team. We put a lot of work in. There was, the foundation was set at an early, early age. There's a vision. I grew up watching Livonia basketball, right? And Livonia basketball, like Mr. Tannelli, oh, you know, your your daughter was there. They were. Yep, Tom Downey, right. And that started early on. Foundation, vision, right? Playing better competition, right, and looking into the future, right? So, having that groundwork, I was invited to Livonia Basketball Camp in fourth grade, and Mr. Tannelli, oh, your daughter was there too, I remember. And just having that, you know, welcome community of Livonia to learn from, you know, the best in the community, and then to bring that to Geneseo. So, we learned a lot through that. We brought in Chris Reed, and it was just his vision to continue to to improve, right? And it it all comes down to foundation, right? My father was, he built homes for a living and also an avid roofer, had a roofing company as well. He would always teach me, Ben, you know, foundation is the most important part of anything, right? So, and when we look at this school, we got to focus on that foundation. We got to look at the future, right? Because in 1999, we were 23 and 2. We were one half away from going to Glenn's Ball, and that was a dream of ours. In fourth grade, I got to go to the Glenn's Falls and see that Livonia team battle a triple overtime or double overtime, maybe first round, and then, you know, the final, the final game, they fell a little short. But as I learned in life, success is not an accident, right? Preparation, vision, hard work. And with this position, Director of Learning and Curriculum at Geneseo, that is focusing on the foundation. If you don't have the foundation, doesn't care what kind of roof, roof you have, right, or or windows, right? So, it starts at the bottom and then goes to the top. So, cuts are never a good thing. We got to keep on investing, and there's a lot of work that's done, you know, behind the scenes and like we all know that, right? With this position, I've seen this position travel out of state as well, right? So, we live, we're fortunate to live in the bubble of Geneseo, right, and it's it's a pretty safe environment. But this, this world we live in, it's fast-paced, right? I'm in the software sales side of things and come up with an idea. And you bring it out, and someone else is doing the same thing, right? So, it's it's being proactive and being out in front of everything, right? And this position's needed. I don't know how, you know, another resource within the school could take over that. It's got to be main focus, and I know the hard work that's being done behind the scenes. And as a father, three-year-old, we used to live in Livonia. We moved to Geneseo recently, and we wanted to come home, back to our roots and have my, you know, our daughter Ella and and my nephews, attend this grade school. And we have many friends with kids in this community. So, today, I decided to take the day off. And I took a trip to Main Street, Geneseo, right? And anyone go to eat pizza, malamias before? Anyone know Eddie? Got biceps and he's behind the pizza. I talked to Eddie about, you know, the Geneseo budget and investing in in education. He was for it. We had a great conversation. Anyone have Aunt Cookie subs in this room? Aunt Cookies? All right. Lori, right? Like a Lori a little bit. Oh, bad. I didn't order a thug, but I should have. Eddie, I did. I ordered a nice cheese pizza. I ate that in the garden. It was real good. I'll go to Aunt Cookies tonight. But had a good conversation with her. Anyone know Bruno? The legend in Geneseo. Bruno, I talked to, I talked to Bruno as well. This very, you know, big advocate in the community. It's all about investing, putting it back in, right? So, he was a proponent as well. Who didn't I talk to? I mean, there are a lot of people on on Main Street today. Our neighborhood, just Geneseo. I mean, I was, I was born here. Very passionate. And I want the best for kids. And I know this this individual. I've talked with him. I know what it's about. I like the ideas. He can connect the kids. Connection, relationships. Thinking outside the box, right? So, again, this world, it's fast-paced. Got to pip basketball, right? You want to remember that? Adam, I forgot. We're special Olympics basketball coaches too on the side. So, try to fit that in into our busy schedules. So, I mean, you look at that foundation, right? You can't just show off the practice. You you need to plan, right, on that? So, success is not a mistake. It's a vision, right? Fourth grade, seeing a Tom Downey team go all the way, and then talking to your best friend who's a point guard. We're going to get there. We're going to get there. In fourth grade. And we were one half away from making that. One half. Probably should have shot better that game, but but it's not a, it's not a mistake. So, the planning has to be there. Foundation, vision, innovation, right? We're in a, we got to always look at that. In this position, if you look at through the bullet points here, the Director of Teaching, Learning, and Curriculum is instrumental in maintaining a cohesive and comprehensive educational experience for our students. Their expertise, leadership, and dedication directly contributes to the success of our school community, overseeing educational programs, alignment with standards, fostering innovation, professional development, and meeting diverse needs. Diversity, right? So, that's all. We moved here. I was in Charlotte, North Carolina, big city, back to small town. And we want the best for kids. That's that's why we're here. We have, you know, our daughter, nephews, friends, kids, and let's go blue. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll be brief. Understand and really do appreciate the difficult position you all are in. Seems like it happens every year that you all are in a difficult position. And I don't run for board. So, I have to trust that you're making the right and the best decisions, right? Something concerned me during the budget presentation last week, both in terms of a specific proposal and the way in which it was framed by an administrator representing this district. There was a discussion of a modification to be made to the delivery of global language instruction to children ending their middle school career. The idea was to put the curriculum delivery on steroids, which I thought was just kind of an inept way of of putting it. But setting that rhetorical point aside, I'm a little concerned that taking what currently lives as a two-year sequence, which used to be buttressed by the sixth-grade sampler, half-year or quarter-year experience, rather, is now being compressed entirely into one year. And I don't know enough about this, but I just want to ask the question, have you all considered if that's developmentally appropriate for children, right? To be asked to meet that benchmark, that first benchmark in New York State after one year of intensive instruction as opposed to the current delivery of over the course of two years?
Thank you. And I can just answer, that that is not the recommendation. That was just an idea of looking at something differently. We are not moving forward with moving Spanish to one year in the middle school.
The speaker? Speakers?
Thank you, everybody.
You can do committee reports and then.
No, I mean. Sure. We can do it later.
Okay.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to introduce a motion to go into executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit or employment history of particular persons.
All in favor? You can stay there. We're going to go press the screen.
I'm just going to pause the zoom then rather than end it so people.
I'd like to make a motion. We return to regular session. There was no action taken.
All right, committee reports, budget finance.
Yes, we met prior to this meeting tonight. We primarily went over some budget transfers to align budget lines where we remove extra out of one budget line item, put it into another that's falling short. So that was primarily what we were trying to.
Kevin, anything on policies?
Yeah, we met last Monday. You were there. We met last Monday and we got through ten policies and stuff like that. I set a goal for committing to get through sixty-five percent of the policy manual. As of right now, we nearly seventy-one percent of that. All right, we have one more meeting in May of policies or, you know, aggressively trying to stack that in another four or five percent of policies to get through. You know, for those of you that are, some of the policies are, you know, are in regards to, to you know, I'm sorry about. You know, school assessment, collection, property tax exemptions. We talked about sale and disposal of school property. You know, expenditure to the school district funds, you for the price of all all the policies that have to be in place to make our school very efficient and functional. All right. From a business perspective, as well as the policies cover a wide variety of venues, from school safety to protection of students to our staff, administration, budget functions, things like that. So it's a daunting task. But I'd like to commend the committee and representatives right now for the ability to get through, you know, seventy-one percent of those policies. So that's.
Good. Thank you. I see ten of them on tonight's agenda for first read. There's ten here for.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. The policies are on the agenda tonight for first read.
Great, thank you. Anything I can see?
Dave, did you want to share about just Hall of Fame?
Yes. After the absence of several years, partly because of COVID, we're going to have a Hall of Fame induction ceremony this Saturday. Ben can chime in if anything that I've missed. We have seven people to be inducted. Two of the seven is posthumous. At four thirty on Saturday, we'll meet by the auditorium for the unveiling of the new plaques. Then at five fifteen, we'll adjourn to the Valley Oak for dinner and speeches. I want to commend Ben, who's worked really hard and Allison was involved too, and bring us up to speed on all the previous winners. So we've got a good base to work from. Thank you for that. And but I'd like to particularly thank and commend Sherry Coletta, who has put in countless hours on this. She's, she's sent the letters out, the letters came back, chasing people down, collecting money and and going into it blind. This is your first run through, and this wouldn't have happened without you. So thank you for that. And if you're free Saturday afternoon, come join us at four thirty.
Great, thank you. All right, with that, let's go to personnel.
Okay, under personnel, I'd like to make a motion to approve items six point zero two through six point zero four. Second.
Any questions substitute, senior, teacher, whatever. Questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You opposed?
Under the business, I'd like to make a motion to approve items seven point zero two to seven point one four.
Second. Those are all the first read policies.
So I have comments about. Appropriate to share now? Okay. So policy five two four zero, in the second paragraph, I would suggest that we do not restrict the language to husband and wife. Prior in there, we refer to persons. Perhaps we could use married couple. We do have to acknowledge the real fact that there are more than just husbands and wives in our community, shared domicile together and common property. Under five five one zero, I just had a question. The district does have an interim audit, correct? Five five two zero, the top was cut off. Don't feel comfortable voting on that. That's.
That's all right. So five five two zero is the active classroom activity fund. All right, for whatever reason, I don't know why it keeps getting cut off. But you know, actually, if you need it.
And then I have a lot of questions about seven three five zero.
Which one?
Timeout and physical restrictions.
Yep.
So this is just first read tonight, so there will be additional. Okay, so I think you might be documenting your questions on the ones seventy-three fifty and others and ask those to send to the policy committee.
Okay. So if I don't agree with them on first reading, like what?
You don't agree. I don't know what you don't agree with, so.
So I define the process to me about what it means to approve first read.
Kevin, how many reads you have?
Thank you.
Two reads, right?
Two reads.
Policy, right?
Right.
Make the minutes. You got, you got questions and stuff like that. Bring the questions back to me and we'll convene between the first and second reading. So prior to the next board meeting, the second meeting that comes, I will address the questions that you have and the answers. So I will address your questions and have the answers.
You're referring seventy-three fifty back to policy.
I would love that.
So we will pull. You're pulling out or just, did you get your answers on those?
The fifty-two forty, I had a language request.
So seven oh seven and seven fourteen.
Those two, man. So you just have to amend it to take.
What are the numbers? Seven point two?
Seven point zero seven and seven point one four.
Okay. Remind my motion to exclude items seven point zero seven and seven point one four.
Second amendment. With the amendment, any further questions? All in favor?
So under business office, I'd like to make a motion to go item three point zero two to eight point zero five. Thank you, eight point zero six.
So we just had a on eight point zero two, we had a relatively long discussion. We'll get into the details here. I think there's still maybe some agreement on the bottom line number, some discussion that should continue on some of the content. But with that said, I'm going to ask for you to take motion.
Make the motion. We.
You did. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.